Okay, we'll call the order of the regular city council meeting of Monday, August 8th, with a roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Ron Sniff.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here. Council members, Ratty absent, Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Carrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Now, City Manager Carey.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
We have a call.
Okay, our invocation speaker today is Pastor Rich Shannon from Sparks Christian Fellowship. Welcome, Rich.
Thank you, thank you for the invite.
Will you pray with me?
Father God, we're grateful for just the opportunity we have to live in this nation, Father. We're grateful for the freedoms that we experience. We just pray today that decisions are made with your wisdom, with the idea to protect those freedoms that you've given us. We, in discussion that takes place today, God, we just pray that it's done with integrity, with honesty, Father, and with your wisdom. Yes, he sings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. You know, and before we get to the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to have a moment of silence for the thirty seals we lost this weekend. If you'd bow your heads for us, please. Thank you. Linda, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
For me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on all, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Okay, just so I'm correct on this chat, comes from the public now, and I don't have to do each one, I can do it at the end, and that'll cover us?
Correct.
Okay. I will open up for public comment. I do not have any cards. Would anybody like to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'll bring you back to the council. Approval of the agenda, consideration of taking items out of sequence, deleting items and adding items. Mr. Carrigan.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to move, I think it's seven point one.
Move it up before six three?
Move it up before six three, yes. And then I'll make a motion to approve it with those changes.
Okay. Any other changes?
I'd like to pull five point five, for my consent agenda.
Okay. Do you have a pen? Any other changes? Okay, Mr. Carrigan? Making a motion?
Yeah, I made the motion with the changes.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Are we voting or ...?
We're gonna vote. Sure, I'm waiting for the screen. Here we go. Passes unanimously. I'm used to just saying, say aye. Okay, recommendation to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 25th, 2011. Anybody wish to pull anything, change it? Okay. You know, this is not working.
It just ... We move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? Passes unanimously. Item number four, announcements, presentations and recognition items. Presentation by the Northern Nevada Special Events Coalition. Who's doing that today? Mr. Houghton?
Yes.
Come on down. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much. May I sit or stand, or how would you like?
Would you sit down and use the, make sure the mic's on?
All right, the microphone is lit. I look like I'm fired up here. Well, thank you very much for having us. We've, as a group, have been moving around the community trying to spread the word about special events and explain what our mission in life is as the Northern Nevada Special Events Coalition. We've got eleven members, although I only have ten logos here. A few of my colleagues have joined me today. We are in the midst of the special event season, so some of them are missing in action. One of them is a surprise visitor, Tony Marie with the Hot August Nights, Alan Kinsley, the executive director of the Reno Rodeo, and Pilar Alcalor. I'm getting better. And then with me as well is Valerie Mello. Valerie is our director of marketing at the Air Races and representatives from R&amp;R Advertising who dedicate a lot of their time and donate to the Special Events Coalition and help us out. Mike Draper and Tara Travada. So, that's who you've got with you today, and myself, Mike Houghton, and the president of the Reno Air Racing Association. Our group was formed about a year ago to address many of the issues that are facing special events today. We have had a very fruitful year together. We've been able to look at many of our challenges. I think we've been able to solve some. We've been able to share a lot of information, which was never the case in the past. We all operated in our own independent vacuums and either whined or cheered loudly depending on how our years did. So, we've come together to work together to help promote each of the events, to do the job that we feel that we, as an industry, should do, to be the cheerleaders for the special events in our community. The events are very important to our community since the amount of other business that we have coming in has begun, or has been, on the decline for a number of years. We look at ourselves as being a mainstay and a core of business that is going to be bringing tourists into our community. Our combined economic impact from our group is around $350 million, which is pretty significant considering each one of us are businesses that are really only in business for a short period of time, three to five days a year. So, it's a real challenge for us to survive ourselves as well as bring an enormous impact into our community. We all use volunteers, we're very dependent upon volunteers, to make our events succeed. We have over 5,000 volunteers that many volunteer for every event, but there's, most of them are unique to each one of our events. We give about $600,000 a year in charitable donations to Northern Nevada, to nonprofits. And in varying degrees, we use nonprofits as our fundraisers, we help nonprofits as designated charities. So, a lot of the $600,000 does remain back into our community and does good. And we, as well as organizations, most of us are all nonprofits under ourselves, and we don't count the money we keep for ourselves to that particular number. Combined, we attract over 2 million fans to our events each year. So, our attendance is pretty significant, and we believe that our community is such a part of everything that we do from a special event standpoint, that it is up to our community to help make sure that we, as special events, continue to do the job that we feel that we are doing economically. So, we do get out and we encourage the locals to come out and attend our events, to spend a couple dollars with our events, to support us, and to join with us in the community pride that we have. We know that Sparks specifically has a real focus and a love for special events. You've displayed that time and time again, and on behalf of our organization, I would like to thank you for leading in the proactive, positive attitude towards a cooperative spirit between government and the private sector in putting events on. You've definitely shown the community that it can be done, it can be done very positively, and we are making some real good progress around our community with other entities that have regulatory control over us, but are opening up their hearts and their arms to make it, our job a little bit easier this year. The example that Sparks has set has been duly noted and deeply appreciated. So, thank you so much for that. Bottom line, and then what I would like to just point out is that it's a community ownership that's absolutely critical to our special events. We've become very good friends, as well as close colleagues, and one thing we commonly understand is that without the support of our communities, whether the individual citizens, whether it happen to be the governmental entities that are a part of our community, or the visitors that come in to enjoy our events, we really need a cooperation and a spirit of pride and ownership in what we do each year. So, we're here to thank you for your support. Specifically, I can speak for the Air Races. We appreciate the help that City of Sparks has stepped forward with. Although we don't hold our events specifically on your soil, you have recognized the fact that it is a community endeavor, and we appreciate your ongoing support. So, our group is very varied, and we are located all over the community, and those of us that are here are more than happy to answer the questions that you have, but we welcome and look forward to your continued support for the special events in our community.
You know, thanks, Mike. You know, all of us are very proud of the special events that we do here in Sparks, and we realize that the Sparks special events have regional impacts, just like your group does, and it's a regional impact that we're giving to everybody. So, what you do affects us, and what we do affects you, and we appreciate all the hard work that you do. My screen's not working. If anybody'd like to speak, just jump on in. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Thank you for coming with the presentation. This is the first that I've heard of the group, so I think it's good to get on out and let people know what's going on, and it's very important to Councilman Smith and myself, because we're, you know, chair of the Tourism Marketing Committee. We've had our BLT out there for two years, you know, with the whole thing of special events. So, my question comes is that how, how is your model, and I don't want to make it real short, and then how can this model, how does the City of Sparks fit into that, and what can we do to support you at the same time? You know, what are you doing so we can get a heads up to help support? And how we're developing special events? Because I think, you know, we've got this group of business leaders on out there that have been looking at this, and, you know, I think we've added two special events this season already because of some things that have come on out of this group, and they're moving in that direction. How do we, what do we do with this information now, where do we go with it?
Well, first of all, duly noted that this is a regional effort that we've put together, and we do represent organizations from Lake Tahoe all the way down into Reno, over into Sparks, and throughout our entire community. Our impetus really is your impetus. We wanted to work together so that we could build a more professional level of communication and business operation for the special events community, and we can continue to survive and grow, because it is extremely important for each one of us individually to be healthy. We're very fragile business. One bad year, one bad day, one bad act, and I'll use the Air Races as an example, we lost $1.2 million in one day in 2001. Without this community and without our sponsors and our fans getting behind us, we wouldn't be here today. The same thing happens to the balloon races, or Hot August Nights, or any one of us. Rodeo, a bad weather day can put us under, because we all operate on very narrow margins. So, the continued level of philosophic support is important, but what I've said is that the City of Sparks has done a stellar job, and City Manager Carey's staff has been great to work with, and I'm speaking for our entire group. You have a positive attitude, let's get the job done, let's not hassle each other, and let's move forward and get it done as quickly and efficiently as we can. So, that's what you're doing, and that's what we need you to keep doing, because you are definitely setting example for other organizations in our community.
Well, thank you. We appreciate that. You know, it is something we take pride in. We made a, this council's made a decision to, you know, to put money into that, to get that done. I guess, is there any way that either representative from our BLT could, you know, be on your email list, or know where your meetings are, or vice versa, someone from your group, you know, being able to interface with our BLT? We call it BLT because this is a business leadership team that's comprised of just mostly business leaders in the community and some City of Sparks staff. Is there a way we can do an interface in there? So, we can be sharing information about what's going on? Because, you know, the worst thing in the special events business, or in any business, trying to reinvent the wheel all the time and not knowing what's going on, and there could be a way out there that really helps somebody else, and everybody knows it except for the people that need the help to do it. So, that's what I'm looking for. Maybe if we can just sit down and offline, sit down and talk about it.
We'd be happy to. And that's the reason we formed.
Yeah.
Is that too often as not, we're each dealing with the same problem, independent of one another, and by getting together and comparing notes, I think we've been able to save each of us money. We've been able to do things a little more efficiently, and we are also promoting each other at each other's events. So, we're trying to get that synergy going, and yes, be happy to communicate with you or whomever you wish to keep you in the loop as to what we're doing.
And that would be great, and if I can, just one last item, Mr. Chair, is the Wednesday of the RIP cook-off, Wednesday and Thursday of the RIP cook-off, we're hosting a FAM tour for special event producers to come on, and I'd really, I think it would be great if we could have some of your folks here to be there. You can contact me or contact Craig Knutson, our chair of the committee, because I think that, you know, it comes in the masses, you know. One event gets better because other events are drawing more people on in, and we're trying to share that information and try to bring in a couple of other event producers in town. If you, you know, would love to be there, we'd love to have somebody there, just kind of tell other event, people in the business, what do we have in this community, and how can we grow it?
We're happy to participate in any way you'd like. We, as I say, we're working together. We had a great display up at the Reno Tahoe Open that the Golf Channel featured as a part of their broadcast that was covered, great coverage of the tournament. We've done the Patty Sheen, we've done a number of events in town together. So, happy to participate, and as always, it's wonderful ribs.
This is our second FAM tour, too. The first one was very successful, so we're looking forward to this. Now, this is a busy month for everybody, starting with the RTTO. Tony, do you want to come down and give us a little go on what's going on? I know you got stuff at the Pepper Mill today and Hot August Nights.
Well, we just got done with three days in Tahoe. We had about 500 cars show up. The kickoff party at Bonanza, we sold that out on Saturday, between 350 and 400 cars. Pepper Mill's tonight starts at four o'clock and goes into Atlantis, and then Wednesday it's wide open to the whole town. So, last I heard, we were about 14 away from a complete sellout, and that's with 200 cancellations this year. So, I have a feeling there's going to be a nice line at check-in on Tuesday morning at 8:00 AM for those last 14 spots. So, pretty excited about the response and the positive stuff that's going on.
And I know RTC is doing their part. They button up most of their projects for this week.
They have been great. You know, them and Endot and Granite, we had a nice meeting last week, and they're going to stop all construction around town and continue to work on the freeway, so hopefully it'll be open for us next year.
Great, great job, and we got the Air Races coming up, and RIP cook-off coming up.
Balloon races.
Balloon races coming up. This is a great time here.
Straight up here.
We've got a lot going on, so. Sure you're good?
Just wanted to highlight, we've got drag racing back, and drag racing in Sparks, right?
Drag racing in Sparks. I'm actually leaving here to go to that venue right now. I have not seen it yet, because I've been up in Tahoe, but I heard it's up and it's ready, and the Christmas tree's up, and really excited about that venue. The buzz about drag races is very big, and I think it's going to be a huge venue for Sparks.
And that's going to be down in Victorian Square in the parking lot on the other side of 80?
The left parking lot of the Squawga.
Burn rubber, baby.
Here we go.
In the area that we just opened with the ribbon cutting last week.
Yep.
And then I just wanted to, you know, I wonder, we've got a couple of large events that happen in the City of Sparks that are completely under the radar screen for most folks, but we have gigantic softball tournaments primarily that are coming in with 24-hour tournaments and all kinds of ages. And so, I just wonder, Tracy Dominguez is our director of Parks and Recreation, and she's been doing a great job of special events, so I want to recognize Tracy and her team, because I think a lot of that friendliness that you're talking about comes out of that department. And then just see if there's any reason why we should be helping some of those promoters connect with your group.
We, as I say, we formed a year ago, we got, we're small. We are looking at expanding as far as the numbers are concerned, but we want to keep it somewhat manageable, so as we finish our special events season this year, we'll look at what makes sense from a growth standpoint as far as membership.
Great. Excellent.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all your work.
Seriously. Move on to consent items. We're going to pull five point five. Anybody else want to pull a consent item? Okay, looking for a motion, please?
Number two, five point one, two, five point four.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, passes unanimously, five point five. Did you pull that in?
Yes.
Ron Corman for the record, fleet and facilities manager for the City of Sparks.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Ron, how are you today?
I'm just fine, thank you.
Good. I just have a couple of questions. One, this is a federal grant?
That's correct.
Now, does it, it would look like it was on to me. And does it have to be spent on a street sweeper? Can it be put to other uses?
It cannot be put to any other use except for what was specified in the grant. So, what was specified for this year was brine-making equipment, two sweepers, and some pull tarts.
Okay. So, we're basically locked into that?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's the federal government's money?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the other question is, I see on the bid, the three bids, and you have two that are lower than the ultimate one that you selected, and I'm just curious as to why that?
That's correct. The bid that came from H&amp;E Equipment was in no way, shape or form close to the specifications that we had requested. They just basically gave us a pamphlet and a price on their regenerative sweeper. The bid from Elgin came with a lot of exceptions to what we had requested in our bid specification. Two of the biggest concerns that we had when purchasing this sweeper, because the City of Sparks extends so far north from the corporate yard, is that we spend a lot of time on the road with the sweeper, driving back and forth to dump or to get to the job site. So, what we were looking at was minimizing that by maximizing the capacity of the sweeper. The Schwartz sweeper has a capacity of hauling 650 gallons of water compared to about 300 gallons in a standard sweeper, and the volumetric capacity of the debris box is at nine yards. So, you know, that's the size of a 10-wheel dump truck.
Yeah.
So, those were a few things that we were looking at, you know, big items right up front. And then there's some other technologies that Schwartz uses in their sweeper that adds to the longevity of their sweeper that we feel is better than the Elgin model. And so, because Schwartz met our specifications, and because of, you know, in these areas, we felt that it was worth our while to go with that unit.
Okay. And the obvious, the obvious question in the room is, we just farmed out our street sweeping to another company. What are we going to use this for?
Okay. I made some notes here, so I wouldn't forget.
Thank you.
What we farmed out, if you will, is routine street sweeping. We are still responsible for leaf sweeping. We're still responsible for sand sweeping after a snow event. We're required by the EPA to pick up our sand within 72 hours after a snow event. We also sweep after special events. We sweep our parking lots, we sweep at the parks, we sweep in front of our paint striper when they're out. You know, if the road happens to have a lot of debris on it, we send the sweeper out, clean up, and then we come in behind them with the striper. We also decided at the time when we were going to outsource our sweeping, that we would keep our sweeping fleet intact in case the sweeper contract didn't pan out. So that, you know, as you can see, the price of a quarter million dollars for a sweeper unit to get rid of those, it would be a huge investment to get back, to be able to get back into the sweeping business, should we decide to do that. So, because this money is available, we've been working on this grant for over three years. It finally came to fruition. We feel that, and with the sweeper that it's going to replace was purchased by a grant some years ago, and that sweeper has been, industry-wide, notoriously plagued with problems. So, that sweeper that's in our fleet spends more time in the shop than it spends out on the road. So, we felt like we've got this money, let's use it to replace that sweeper, so we've got a dependable unit in our fleet.
I appreciate your explanation. Those are the questions that I'm sure I was going to get, as soon as someone said, "Why are you buying a street sweeper when you don't have, when you have a contract?" So, those are the questions that I just wanted everyone to know, that, you know, there's good reason to buy a street sweeper. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you. In one of your explanations in here, it said that the sweeper that was recently delivered by Owen Equipment?
Yes.
Okay, so how many street sweepers do we have right now?
Five.
We have five. And the one that was recently delivered, didn't include equipment that was ordered?
That is correct.
And why do, then why do we accept it?
It has not been accepted and has not been paid for yet.
Okay.
It has been sitting down at our city garage for, since the beginning of May, I believe, when they delivered it, and it still has not been retrofitted to include the equipment that we asked for, and actually, that is one of the other reasons why we have chosen to go with a more expensive model, is that the track record on the vendor is, so far, not been stellar.
So, what are they going to do, just leave it there?
No, they have plans. They've retrofitted the majority of it, but when they came over the other day, they didn't have everything that they needed to finish it, so we're hoping that it'll be finished by the end of the week.
Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ron, the grant that we have, is that grant specifically to buy equipment, or is it specifically to, to be able to maintain EPA guidelines on sand salt distribution and pickup?
It is specifically to purchase new equipment to be able to maintain the EPA guidelines. If I might expand on that just a little bit, the equipment it specifies must be PM-10 compliant, which plays into a whole Southern California air quality standard, so on and so forth.
The grant can't be used for a subcontractor to do the same thing that we're trying to do?
No, sir.
Okay, I just have a hard time with this, you know, this is why the federal government is broke, and the rest of the world's going to pay the price for it, is because we make laws, and then we turn around and we write checks to go ahead and have people comply with the laws, and we're sitting with five sweepers in the yard, we've got a contract to save $200,000 a year to do that, and now we're going to spend $238,000 to buy another piece of equipment. It just, people look at this and go, "I just don't understand the math of government uses."
I understand your concern. As I said before, this is a grant that we've been working on for several years, obviously before this economic crisis, you know, of late. And so, now it's come to fruition, and the timing is just bad.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Okay. Ron, how much time do we have to use this money?
Actually, we're past due. This money was allotted to us for the last fiscal year, and...
But we just, but we just got it?
No, we got it. Actually, you, this council accepted the grant in September of last year, and then there came a snag about Buy America, and trying to work out the details with the federal government and allowing the buyer, or to find out if the Buy America and these products met their requirements was a long holdover.
So, this was the original grant, 700 and...
That's correct.
Something thousand dollars.
Seven hundred and five thousand, five hundred dollars.
And we spent it all except for this?
No, sir. We have only so far, actually, so far, we have not spent one dime. You have approved the money to purchase a sweeper, the one that Councilman Carrigan was referring to that's sitting in our yard and has not been paid for yet. This is the second appropriation out of those funds, and I will be coming to you soon for a third appropriation for a brine-making system that will include storage tanks, tank, truck loading, equipment for dispersing the brine on the roads as an anti-icing procedure. The idea behind that is to, again, it's an air quality thing, trying to improve our road surfaces as well as hopefully being able to reduce some of the particulates.
We couldn't use this money to bring our current sweepers up to standard?
The current sweepers are up to standard. However, the sweeper that this is going to replace is of a model and design that has been discontinued, and as I mentioned, industry-wide, the state of Nevada has... And, as I mentioned, industry-wide, the state of Nevada has eight or so of these sweepers sitting on their back lot that they can't use because they're too plagued with problems. Washoe County, the same. City of Reno, the same.
I think I have the same issues as Mr. Schmidt does. This is, this is, to me, it's a waste of money for this. That's my opinion. Any more comments? Okay, um...
I have a question.
Julia?
Do we need it? You're saying that we're staying in the street sweeping business? And, does staff feel like we need the sweeper?
As I mentioned, this is a different design and style of sweeper than what we've had before. It's a total vacuum unit, so it doesn't have, it has gutter brooms, but it doesn't have a main broom. So, what we're, uh, anticipating is that we will have a much severely decreased dust issue with this unit. Uh, you've probably seen other sweepers running around, and even though they're quote-unquote PM-10 compliant, um, they still look like a little pigpen driving around. And, there's just nothing you can do about it because you're beating the ground and, and, you know, kicking up dust to try and pick up the particulates. Uh, being as that this unit is a vacuum unit, it's, um, got screens and so on and so forth inside of the debris hopper that, uh, um, capture that air, um, the, the anticipation is, is that we will have greatly reduced dust issues with this new...
On the five areas of sweeping that we've stayed in?
Correct.
So, staff's recommendation is that we do need the equipment will be an improvement over our current stems?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think the street sweepers, I see that kicking up dust and not using any water.
They use water. You just, you can't put down enough water.
Okay. Let me ask you another question. We have one striper.
Yes.
Could we use this money to buy another striper?
No, sir.
Absolutely not.
No.
Okay. Mr. Lawson?
This goes back to the question again. We don't spend it on this particular sweeper, we lose it.
That's correct.
And it goes back to the federal government?
Well, it doesn't actually go back. We just don't put in for reimbursement. This is our money up front, and then they reimburse us. And, the state currently is holding that money. So, my guess would be is that another agency would probably be able to use that money to buy themselves a sweeper.
Okay. I was more about sweepers than you ever wanted to know, but here we are.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Lawson?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, street sweeper on 5.5.
We have a second?
A second?
This is working out, screen's working.
It's working, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, or, I'm sorry, please vote. The noes have it. Three to two.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Okay. Moving on to general business, 6.1. Presentation, discussion, and possible direction on redrawing city council ward boundaries based on...
Can I ask a question about the last one?
Sure.
That sounded to me like the concern was over the street sweeper, but there were some other things that might be positive for the city in their, the brine creation system. And so, I'm wondering if we are eliminating some of the other might be positive features?
No, there's still a grant that's still out there. Would this portion of it was for the street sweeper? Is that right, Ron?
Was this just for the street sweeper?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Jim Rundell, the man, the myth.
Good afternoon. Jim Rundell, Senior Planner, here to present, uh, the first workshop, or begin the first workshop for the ward redistricting. Staff has received data from the United States Census to help us begin drafting the ward boundaries. Based on the data that we received, the current ward boundaries, uh, are out of, out of whack, essentially, with what the municipal code says they should be. Uh, best way to look at this might be sideways. I've put on the overhead a, I don't know if we can look at it. I guess that works. So, with the current, the way the boundaries are currently drawn and the population that's occurred since the last boundaries were redrawn in 2003, Ward 5 is overpopulated by 3 percent. Ward 4 is overpopulated by 25 percent. Ward 3 is underpopulated by 16 percent. Ward 2 is underpopulated by 3 percent. And, Ward 1 is underpopulated by 10 percent. The 2010 census said that the population of the City of Sparks is 91,057 people. If you divide that by five, essentially, we're looking for as close to 18,211 people per ward that we can get to. And, eighteen, the 18,000 is residents. It is not registered voters. It is not people over the age of 18. It is citizens in that ward. Staff has proposed three concept, as, concepts as directed by the city council at the last This is titled Concept 1, Redistricting Concept 1. Essentially, this utilizes the old concept, or the existing concept, excuse me, and most evenly distributes the population utilizing arterials, Lake Sparks Boulevard, and Vista Bul, excuse me, Vista Boulevard here, McCarran, Audi Boulevard, and divides the populations. And, each, each ward is within the 5 percent threshold and is very close to the 18,211 people that we were, we were shooting for. It does change and moves Pioneer Meadows, which the council is more familiar with, but Pioneer Meadows from, uh, my, or Councilman Carrigan's Ward 2, Councilman Schmidt's Ward, Council, or Ward 4 to Ward 5. And then, a portion of the vistas moves from Ward 4 to Ward 3. Concept 2, essentially implemented or proposes a northern-southern type of ward boundary. Uh, the upside to, to this, this proposal is that all of the wards essentially get different parts of the city. Each of the wards would have a piece of the TOD. Each of the wards would have a piece of the industrial area, and each of the wards would have a portion of some of the newer development that occurred in the northern parts of the city in, in the last five years. Of course, staff is limited in the proposals or concepts in that we have to make sure that the residence that each of the council persons live in is within the ward, uh, that the ward boundaries are contiguous, and that the ward boundaries follow the major arterials In, in following the council's direction from the last time we spoke about ward boundaries, staff came up with a third ward bound, or ward boundary concept. Essentially, this concept incorporates three of the wards into the industrial area and TOD corridor, and it also incorporates the Spanish Spring Val, Spanish Springs Valley into three of the wards. Staff isn't endorsing one concept over the other. Staff has just done their best to come up with three concepts that are different, uh, substant, or significantly different than each other, and hopes that the council can con, uh, comment on each of the wards, and then we can take those comments forward and begin to refine, uh, refine that into something that the council is comfortable with. And, that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Well, this is just a discussion on, and ideas to throw out. There's no action being taken today.
Correct.
How about comments? Julia?
I just have a quick question. Though, maps weren't attached to the staff report on the website. Have they been distributed to the public at all? Are they, they're not attached to the complete packet? Is it, is it an additional addendum? Okay, great. So, they are, that's just my question. They've been, so they're available on the website for anybody who wants to look at it?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other comments? I'll start on, um, let's just take Concept 1, for instance. And, again, I'm not endorsing Concept 1. I've just gotta, on, um, where Ward 3 goes into the vistas, there's one street, it's Talladega. That's the homes that oversee Vista Boulevard. Can you see it there? It's to the right of that little county portion.
Okay.
The other one, the other one. Now, go to the right, up into the blue area.
Okay.
Up, no, back down.
Back down.
Okay, to go left.
Go up.
Go up. It's right there. Right where the Ward 3 and Ward 4 come together?
Right here?
Uh, yeah. See the, you know, and I tried this with one pair of glasses, then I tried another pair, and then I put two pair on.
Okay.
And, so, anyway, but Talladega, to get to Talladega, you have to go through, either from the west with me, so you go through Ward 3. That doesn't make sense that that would be.
Right there.
Because it's just the hillside, anyway. That should be put in Ward, in, if this, if this...
You know what? Let's try it.
Yeah, that's it, right there. You see, you can't get to Talladega unless you go through Ward 3 there. So, that should probably be Ward 3.
Yeah.
In this scenario.
Okay.
And then, um...
Okay, in this scenario.
In this scenario. And, did you, can you see this point? Do you wanna see this?
No.
Um, on Ward, on redistricting Concept Number 2, uh, right now, there's, there's a section that's in Ward 3. It's, um, it contains Round Mountain Circle. Are you on 2? Are you on 2 right now?
Yeah.
Okay, so go, um, Down Bering Boulevard.
Okay.
Let me see where you're at. Right in there?
That's Bering and Vista.
Just, just a little bit down. There's a, there's a, it's called Round Mountain Circle. I'd like to keep that under this scenario. You see the, you see the little section there? I don't know what that street says. Now, a little bit to your, to our left. Stop right there.
Shady Oak.
Okay, just to the right of Shady Oak. No, you're, you're there.
Okay.
Just put your pencil on it. Up, 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 and down. Right there to the left. Up. Okay, you're miss, you're all over it. A little bit more, right there.
That's right there?
Well, no, it's, it's just a, right there. That section right in there, that's a circle. I'd like to keep that in my ward.
Okay.
Yeah, in, under this scenario.
Not area.
Yeah. And then, on Concept 3, same, same deal. Same area, yeah, on 3. I would just like to keep that in Ward 3, no matter what scenario comes up. Okay, Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, thank you. Um, for my two cents' worth, I think the only concept that'll work for me is, uh, Concept 1.
Okay.
I think the other two are outrageous myself, you know? I mean, it's, it's, it takes, it takes, first of all, one of them is, would, I'd be representing people that I've never represented before. We might as well just go at large and, and go for a change to our charter and say, "We're just gonna all go at large," because that's basically what, what that one does. The north-south one, I think, is almost the same way. The district, uh, Concept 1, I think, will work. One of the things you have to remember about Ward 4, 3, and 5, I think we're the only ones that have homeowners associations. Okay? If you split the vistas, that means two of us will be representing the vistas that have a homeowners association. They're not gonna know who to go to, okay? If that's the concept we want to maintain. Uh, if you take a look at Concept 1, and I don't know how the numbers will work out, but I think this might work, is if you go up to, uh, the north of where you circled on Talladega, okay, you see that, the purple part of it that you gave it, Ron?
Uh-huh.
If you put that back into Ward 4, and then everything to the right-hand side?
This and the...
Yeah, right there. Put that back in Ward 4, okay? And then, everything to the right-hand side or east of Los Altos, okay? They have it, they have their own, that's Miramonte. Miramonte has its own, um, homeowners association. So, instead of having, you see where, go up to your left now. Move the map, or expand the map, whatever, right there. You see how you split that between Ron and, and me?
Yeah.
That's all Miramonte. Just give that to Ron. You see what I mean? Put that in Ward 3. So, in other words, you take away part of it...
And go to the left, the other way around, yeah.
Yeah. That goes all back, put that in the Ward 3, okay? And I think that those numbers will work out. And then, if you go up to where Ward 5 moves into Ward 4 with Pioneer Meadows?
Uh-huh.
I think if you just leave that in Ward 4, I think the numbers will work. Because if you go all the way north, there's only like four roads worth.
Say that part again, Mike, the Pioneer...
Pioneer Meadows, see that little, see it's, yeah, you might as well put that in Ward 4. Just cut, you know, and just, where, right there, yeah, just like that. And I think those numbers may work out.
Okay. You can keep in mind, Councilman, as you were saying, the other proposals, we were just trying to come up with three concepts that were essentially distinctly different from each other.
Well, they sure were.
Three concepts that you could discuss.
Now, I'm, the comments I've got were from, uh, the people I represent said, "Why don't we just go, just go citywide then?" In other words, let's just have five, uh, at large. Because everybody remembers, all we do is we go in the ward for only the primary, and then after that, we go, uh, citywide. And I think all of us here answer questions from whoever asks them.
Right.
I mean, it's not like when it comes up and somebody is in Ward 5 and they think they're in Ward 4, I don't say, "Sorry, I'm not gonna answer your question," or "Find out, go call Ron." We, we, we don't work that way.
Right.
And, and I see the only problem with that is that we'd have to go to legislature with a change on that. And we have to have this done by October?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. We want to have it done by October so that, uh, folks that are considering running in next year's election will know which ward they're in.
Yeah, because let's be honest about this. The only ward that you really need to carve up is mine, to make the numbers work. Because everybody else is pretty much within, well, if you look at everybody else's, they're pretty much within...
The Ward 3 is underpopulated by 16.
Well, that's what I meant. You just have to give, but what I'm saying is...
So, balance, rebalancing here.
As far as, gaining may be different than losing. Does that make sense? Okay? Because people are used to being represented by one person.
Councilman ready?
When do you expect to have the demographic information finished?
By the next, by the next workshop, which is, uh, on August 29th.
So, it won't be ready for the citizen meeting?
The workshop, isn't the workshop the 23rd?
No, August 29th.
What's on, what's on the 23rd?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
No, two different things. The August 29th will just be, uh, I anticipate it'll be within an hour. It'll just be ward boundary.
Okay.
Discussion. Uh, the, the citizens' meeting is this Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I don't think that we'll have analyzed, analyzed it to be, to be ready to, um, to show the citizens what, what we think. I think that'll be, we'll be doing it by tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't think it'll be ready to distribute by Thursday.
That, that's really my main concern, is that, you know, certainly, we need to make sure that we're following the law. There has been significant change in our demographics in our community, and you outlined in your staff report what we need to make sure that we're avoiding.
Yes.
Uh, but we don't have the demographic information to know if we're avoiding that or not.
We haven't.
We'll know that by the 29th.
We...
Or you've, you've, you've considered it?
Yes.
You have considered it?
Yes.
Okay. It just hasn't been published?
Right. We're trying to propose, propose concepts that if you, if the council had said, "Oh, we like 2 or 3 or 1," that we would be able to move forward with it. We do feel like, but I ha, that, that's a first blush, uh, look at, uh, demographic stuff. It's not actually in a report form that I, that'd be, like, handed the council in a staff report. We haven't gotten to that point.
Okay, well, those are the questions that I'm getting, so the soonest we could publish that and make it available to the public, even...
Probably, your staff report for the twenty-ninth will be due, essentially, two and a half weeks before, so it'll be relatively soon that you'll be getting something on that.
We'll get it, but it won't get published to the website until three days before the meeting.
No, we can put it on the we, I, I'm sure we can figure out a way to get it on the website, that, uh, that staff report, essentially, so that people could look at that.
And that's what I'm asking, that it's public as soon as is possible.
Sure.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Um, Jim, a couple of things on one...
Sure.
...we're looking at here, we're talking about, and that's the Pyramid Highway corridor.
Yes.
It's always a difficult corridor, where the stuff that goes on it to be, have two different council people on the same corridor.
Okay.
You know, McCarran and Pyramid is always a disaster, you know, with, there's just a lot of issues always come along there, and that feeds on up the line. Is there possibly a look at of taking that corridor and giving that all to one council person? I don't know if, uh, if, uh, Mr. Lawson wants to go on, all the way on up there. It makes sense that McCarran and Pyramid is in his corridor there, because that's, that's, you know, he's closer to it than I am.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, it's, it's difficult to have all these, you know, different people representing different areas.
So, Councilman Schmidt, are you, are you saying potentially, keep being, or I mean, uh, putting all of this in the Ward Two, from La Pasada down to McCarran?
I don't think the whole thing, you know, is, is Ward, because the northern portion of Pyramid doesn't get the issues of the southern portion of...
Right.
But, you know, you're, you're, you know, from, you know, the, um, the shopping centers and stuff, south is where all the issues seem to come from, unless, you know...
From there.
Because I, I don't hardly get anything from the north, but I get a, get a bunch from the south.
So, can you tell me again what, what you would potentially like me to consider, or like us to consider?
Look to see how many, it looks like that, you know, I've, I've got the most people in my ward right now, so, um, and looking at putting most of that corridor in, into Ward Two. I don't think there's that many people along there, I think there's one little housing section right down there.
Essentially, in the Ward Two.
Correct. I think most of that's all commercial in there, and that one little housing, or it's actually a trailer park, um, down, down south, right at the bend there of Pyramid Highway.
Okay. And the ordinance does say that we're supposed to consider, it doesn't say when we can to use major arterials to help break up ward boundaries.
I mean, it's, it's fine like it is, but it's just, it makes it difficult for people...
Okay.
Who's calling who, sometimes, uh, on this, you know, and right now, the break is at McCarran Avenue, and of course, you know...
Sure.
McCarran and Pyramid, one intersection, nobody cares, it's, you know...
Okay. Very good.
Okay, Mr. Lawson?
I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Schmidt. The Queen's Way is the dividing line right now.
I'm gonna zoom in, Councilman.
Yeah, please, because I can't see it. So, it's Queen, and there's, if I'm correct, that's low-density housing to the north, I mean, that's lots...
That's the Pyramid-McCarren intersection, right there, just...
Right, but up top, where you have Queen's Way...
Uh-huh, there.
Yeah, right in there, to me, makes, that piece, I think, should be in Ward Two. Because I agree with, uh, Councilman Schmidt.
The theory here...
I get a lot of questions on the Pyramid-McCarren interchange, and what's going on with RTC, and, and it's one side of the street you're in my ward, and one side of the street you're in his, so I, I think that makes the most sense.
Should just bring the, bring the line down on the right-hand side, straight on?
I'd say just go straight, yeah, straight up, pick up that, on the way, the, uh...
Right by Vicki Lane? Just go straight up from Vicki Lane?
Yeah, I don't think you'd have to go as far north as what you have drawn on there now, just pick up Keough Drive and that area, and away you go.
Do you have a overlay of law precincts, so you know what the precinct boundaries are like? Because that makes a big difference on a lot of this stuff.
The, the police precincts?
No. The, uh, uh, Washoe County...
Voter precincts.
Voter precincts.
No, I, I...
Because it, because I believe, and you, you guys know this better than I do, that, that you have to follow precinct boundaries right now, too, that the only ones that can change precinct boundaries is Washoe County, is that correct? We can't change those boundaries. So, dissecting of boundaries, too, is, is an issue on precincts.
Okay. I'll look at that.
I, I don't know.
Councilman Schmidt, I, I did not analyze that for, for this, I, I was unaware of that. So, I'll, I'll look at what, what that law says, and...
I mean, maybe that's just a phone call to the county, and say, "If we split up a precinct, is that, is that okay to do that?"
Okay.
I mean, because, you know, that...
Thank you for letting me know.
They may go back afterwards and draw up new precincts, but, you know, we may have, you know, precinct captains that think they have, uh...
Sure.
A spot, and then they, all of a sudden, they don't.
Right.
And then you, then you got World War Three on your hands.
Okay.
Uh, Councilman Schmidt, to your point, uh, I, I think...
Give me the record number.
Armando Nolas, City Planner. Uh, one of the reasons that the, uh, County Registrar's Office conveyed to us for the October deadline was that they would in fact be redrawing, uh, precinct, uh, boundaries based on, on, on the new district, so, um, they're subject to change, essentially.
Precinct boundaries is by the ward, or precincts, splitting up precincts?
Well, they will, my understanding is that they will re, they, they're going to be reviewing precincts based on ward boundaries, as well as the other redistricting that's occurring, uh, on the part of the state. Uh, and so, now, that, that may be delayed, obviously, at the state level. Um, but at any rate, um, the, the point I wanted to make was that, that may, those precinct boundaries may change based in part on what we do.
Thank you. Any more comments? Mr. Lawson?
Very daunting task, and made it semi-coherent, so I appreciate the effort there, because it, that is not easy, trying to play with all those numbers and keep the, as close as you've got it in these different concepts, so thanks very much.
Thanks, Councilman. And I want to recognize Adam, as, uh, in the G, GIS department, he's, he's the computer guy that I give to, and he makes sense of it on the computer, using a language I don't entirely understand.
Well, not a lot of changes on here, uh, Ms. Ratty?
Um, I just thought maybe it would be, for any public that's interested, if you would just talk about the next steps, so there's the public meeting and then the hearing.
Sure, what, what, uh, what, my plan is, is we'll have a citizens advisory committee meeting this, this week. We're going to show them these three ward concepts that, and I'm going to inform the citizens of what your comments were today, and have them look at them, ask them for input on all of the concepts. And then, what I'd like to do is, in our meeting on the twenty-ninth, you'll have a staff report that analyzes the, uh, demographic information, uh, for, for the concepts, and then, uh, you'll also have information on what the citizens had, had said from that meeting. Essentially, from that meeting on the twenty-ninth, I believe staff will have a, will have revised Concept One, for sure, to show you how, how your comments worked out. Uh, if, if we begin to implement some of these proposals, essentially, it's like working with an amoeba, you think you're only down two hundred people in this ward, so you might move a block over here, and then what it'll do is, it'll end up tipping the one ward, it'll drop it by a thousand people and put, and then the wards are once again out of, out of whack. So, we'll analyze these and try to make those work to an extent, propose those to you on the twenty-ninth. And then, uh, get comments similar to what we've done today, bring it back. And it, it is an ordinance, so it will require two hearings, we'll have two hearings in September, and hoping that in September, I think it's the twenty-sixth, we will hopefully form, be able to formally adopt one of the concept, or, it won't be a concept then, it'll be a proposal, and hopefully be able to adopt it and be done by September, end of September.
Okay, Mr. Kerrigan?
Yeah, what, what, what does, if you remember what it is, or maybe this is a question for Chet, what does the law say? Does it have to be within five percent, or as close as possible?
Within five percent.
And then, what happens if it isn't? It's our own ordinance, right? Because I know, the last time we did this, we, we accepted the ordinance with Ward Four being way out of whack. I know that for a fact.
I, I would say that's a question for Chet.
Well, Mike, this whole process is fraught with potential legal liability. There have been cities that are fighting, gerrymandering lawsuits for over a decade. Those, that's the consequence you're looking at, if, if you're out of, um, out of whack. I know that you were talking about demographics, and we've got two ways of presenting demographics to the City Council. One is to present all the, all the demographic information. The other option is to not present you with any demographic information, leave that up to staff. The reason I say that is that if you're presented with demographic information, the possibility exists that you would be subject to some type of a lawsuit down the road, and that you made a decision based on demographics. And by making a decision based on demographics, you have somehow tried to exclude a particular group out of your particular wards, or somehow, um, prevent a particular group from representing itself. Now, that's certainly up to the City Council, in other words, the more information you get, the greater the likelihood that we could be sued. I don't know, we've never been sued before, we've been out of whack before, Mike, um, it's up, it's essentially up to you guys, I'm just, uh, anyway, that's the downside you're looking at, Mike.
Okay, thank you. So, ignorance of the demographics protects us, is that what it is?
I don't know.
Well, it, you know, if I go to court and say, "The City Council did not make a decision based upon demographics," that's probably gonna help us.
Okay, well, we'll discuss staff with the attorney's office and, and, uh...
I like the idea of you just bringing it to us.
Okay.
Mr. Schmidt?
Glad to know what the rules are, without the numbers, but what, what are you shooting for here?
For, shooting for what, Councilman Schmidt?
Demographic rules, I mean...
No, I wasn't necessarily shooting for anything, the analysis that I had done and hadn't completed was essentially, we have, we have the existing council wards as they are. So, what I was trying to do, these are the ones that everyone is familiar with, essentially what I was trying to do is, take what the breakups are in these existing wards, and compare them to what they would be with new wards. And, uh, that was, that was about as far as I had gotten.
My, my question is, under the regulations today, you know, what is the rules that you're following? I mean, what are, what numbers are you looking for, what percentages, you know, we know plus or minus on the population numbers.
Sure.
But, obviously, there's other numbers on out there that you have to take a look at. What are those numbers?
There aren't numbers, that's, that's the challenge for staff, is there aren't any really number, real numbers to, for us to shoot for.
Okay, so, these three maps, you say, are within demographic compliance, but we don't have numbers that, to what demographics we're shooting for?
If, if you assume that since we've had the last, or the existing ward boundaries for eight years, and we haven't been sued over that, and if you can assume that those were compliant, and then make an analysis of what the proposals would be compared to the existing ward, essentially, that's what I was doing.
That's a lot of assumptions.
It is. It's essentially all, all there is.
Councilman Ratty?
So, um, in your report, you said that we're generally trying to avoid fracturing, stacking, and packing, so I'm assuming that that's what you're looking at? That, is there anything that we're doing that is concerning about those three things?
No, not in my opinion.
Not in your opinion? So, then, I guess, my question is, I've asked for the demographic information to be released and to be released publicly as soon as possible, and I'm, I'm not backing off from that, I'm not real comfortable with the ignorance is bliss defense when we're looking at citizens in our community, and are they adequately represented?
I think that's totally appropriate, go ahead, and, uh, whatever we have, uh, put it out there, and, uh, we'll go from there.
Okay. Okay, um, we've talked about, a lot about Concept One, and a little bit about two or three, does anybody have any comments on any of the, of the concepts? Okay, then, then you have some direction?
Yes.
Good enough to go?
Yes.
Okay. There's no action on this today, so thank you very much, Jim. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, six point, um, two, consideration and possible acceptance of equipment provided to the Sparks Police Department for the buffer zone protection program from the Department of Homeland Security via the Washoe County Sheriff's Department with a value of forty-two thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of councils, Deputy Chief Brian Allen for the record. Uh, what we have before you today is...
What was that title again?
That was Deputy Chief, sir. I lost an acting word in there somewhere along the way.
And congratulations.
Thank you very much for all your support. Uh, what we have before you today is about a year and a half-long project between the Department of Homeland Security and local law enforcement, being headed through the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. They did a regional study on facilities located within the region that would have a potential for either domestic or international terrorism. In that study, uh, there were facilities located within the city of Sparks, and out of that, they determined on a, kind of a pre-list of what type of equipment we could apply for that would help us, uh, protect and maintain that those, the security at those facilities. And out of that, uh, we are eligible for forty-two thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty cents from the Department of Homeland Security. So, we're looking to move forward with, uh, the purchasing of this equipment and protecting those sites.
So, this is surveillance equipment, right?
This is a variety of tactical equipment, I would not like to go into all the details of what type of equipment we're, that we are purchasing with this, um, based on...
Well, you went into detail about what you have now.
Yeah.
What's included, mostly cameras, is what you talked about, so it includes some cameras in it?
It does, includes, uh, no, the surveillance system was a previous consent item.
Uh-huh.
That was item five point four. This is items specifically for the protection of this, uh, these sites that have been located within Sparks.
Okay.
You're right.
Any questions? Mr. Kerrigan?
No, I was just gonna point out that there was, it's very limited information, so that we won't point out what we found, correct?
Uh, that would be greatly appreciated, if you'd like to have a discussion, I'd be more than willing to share it with you, I'm just not in this forum, please.
Okay. Any more questions?
I'll move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Kerrigan.
Second.
And a second from Councilman Schmidt. Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote. Thank you, sir, passing the announcement.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to seven point one, second reading, in public hearing. Who does this, Linda? Chet?
Seven point one?
Mm-hmm.
This is a ordinance that we presented to you for your consideration, simply because we've applied for a grant, and the people issuing the grant for our law enforcement entity required that we have a ordinance creating a police department. Uh, we got to looking around, and we didn't have an ordinance creating a police department.
So, do they owe us money for all the, the pay?
No, 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 but, uh, it's, it's more of an administrative, uh, matter, it can get...
Just kidding.
It can get substantive down the road, uh, if, if you start tweaking these ordinances. That is, if, for instance, you start giving the police chief certain rights that the fire chief doesn't have, or you start, uh, tweaking the departmental responsibilities, this is not that type of an ordinance, this is simply creating a, a police department, something that we've, we have the inherent authority to do, something that we have done, uh, something that our charter has addressed as far as the, uh, the police and fire chief in the
as far as the, uh, the police and fire chief in the past, those positions. So that's why we presented this to you, with no, uh, no substantive impact.
Okay. Any questions? Councilman Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Um, Mr. Adams, how does this differ from the charter, charter requiring us to have a police department? Or actually, the charter requires us to have a police chief. Doesn't require us to have a police department, it requires us to have a police chief. Are, are we going more now than our charter tells us to do?
I don't see this as conflicting with the charter, sir, at all. I think that this really just, it, it just says what, what we already have. In other words, we've created a police department, created, uh, we, we have a police chief. As a matter of fact, I think that was just tweaked in our latest, um, amendment to the charter, wasn't it, Sean? The police chief, fire chief?
Yes, so it, it is, um, proper to describe this as an administrative change, unnecessary for us to gain, um, some of the information we use in the police department. It's not as, in any way in conflict with your ability to eliminate a police department in the future or anything like that. And a charter change, uh, would only involve the office of the police chief, which is, would involve a charter change.
Yeah, I think the natural inference from a, uh, from a, a police chief is that you have a police department. So this, it just clarifies that, sir.
So it, so it brings the old saying true, that what happens in California as soon spreads everywhere.
That's correct.